Good morning, good morning. We praise God for His goodness, His mercy, and His love. Thank you for being out there, Newman, Alex. Thank you so much for being out there, family and friends. Thank you for being out there, former students and new friends that we have made. God is truly good, and as we prepare now to study His Word, He tells us and reminds us in Timothy to study, "To show thyself approved unto God; a wordman needing not be ashamed, but rightly dividing the word of truth." Let us bow our heads this morning. Father, I stretch my hands to thee; no other help I know. If thou withdraw thyself from us... Lord, where shall we go? We thank you, God, that in the midst of so much that's going on right now, we believe in our hearts that you have not withdrawn from us. Sometimes, Father, we withdraw from you, but you have proven to be an on-time and a right-now God. So we thank you for being with us. Continue to heal our landlord, continue to bless our families and our friends, even our enemies, God. Continue to lead us in the path, path of righteousness. And then, Lord, every now and then anoint our heads with oil and allow our cups to overflow. We thank you for being our Lord, our Savior, and our God. Now, as we come to study time, Father, open our hearts and our minds that we might be receptive of your Word. Your Word have we hid in our hearts that we might not sin against you. Thank you, Lord, for all that you have done, all that you are doing right now, and for all that you will do in the future. It is in Jesus' name that we pray, with thanksgiving. And all who believed joined me and said, "Amen, amen." You remember last week, we were on Job, and we ended in Job 33rd chapter? As we ended in Job 33rd chapter, we know that Job had kind of complained about his diseases. He was talking about the diseases and that he had been judged by them that God was angry with him. So many times when we are confronted with affliction, we feel that, you know, we have done something to anger God. And we're going to learn, as we are reading here and as Elihu is talking to him, we're going to learn that that is not necessarily so. That God has purpose for everything that happens in our lives, be it good or bad. There is a purpose. And as we continue to study the Word today, we're going to find out that this is just the case in Job's case, that the pain sometimes is the fruit of sin and that yet by the grace of God, the pain in the body is made to be something that is called good for our soul. We don't necessarily see it, but we have to have faith to believe that whatever is going on in our lives, that God is in control and that He is working it out for our good. Let us look at chapter 34 this morning as we continue our study. It says in the King James Version, "Furthermore, Elihu answered and said, 'Hear my words, O ye wise men, and give ear unto me, ye that have knowledge; for the ear tryeth words as the mouth tastes meat.'" And it says to us here, as we are reading, "Let us choose to use judgment; let us know among ourselves what is good; for Job hath said, 'I am righteous,' and God hath taken away my judgment. Should I lie against my right? My wound is incurable without transgression. What man is like Job, who drinketh up scorny like water, which goeth in company with the workers of iniquity and walketh with wickedness?'" Verse nine, "For he hath said, 'It profiteth a man nothing, that he should delight himself with God.'" Now, I want us to remember that verses one through nine, Elihu is accusing Job of charging God with injustice, with injustice. And Job does this, and this is why I believe God had to send Elihu to Elihu to put Job back on the right track. Because, you know, he was questioning God, and he was saying some things, and aren't we all guilty of that? Things going on in our lives, we question God. And what God wants us to do is have faith and believe that whatever it is, whatever it is, that He is yet able to work it out. And so, as we look at that, Elihu calls upon those present to decide upon Job's words. It tells us and lets us know that Job has spoken as if he meant wholly to justify himself, and he said that, "I have cleansed my hands in vain, does not only defend against God's children, and he said, but gratifies his enemies as he says that they should say certain things." But what God is saying to Job is through Elihu, He is giving Job a message. And I believe that at the end of these scriptures that we're doing today, all of us can feel better in knowing that there is purpose in everything. Let's look at verses 10 to 15. "Therefore hearken unto me, ye men of understanding; far be it from God that he should do wickedness, and from the Almighty that he should commit iniquity; for the work of a man shall he render unto him and cause every man to find according to his ways. Yea, surely God will not do wickedly; neither will the Almighty pervert judgment; who hath given him a charge over the earth, or who hath disposed the whole world? If he set his heart upon man, if he gathered unto himself his spirit and his breath, all flesh shall perish..." Verse 15, "All flesh shall perish together, and man shall turn again unto dust." This is helping us to realize and to recognize that Elihu had showed Job that God meant him no hurt by afflicting him, but intended his spiritual benefit. It was intended, because remember when God said to the devil, to Satan, "Have you considered my servant, Job? I find that there's none like him?" He knew that Job was strong-willed and strong-willed and that he could go to Job and that Job would continue to have faith in him. So he didn't mean any hurt or harm by this. So now, we go and we remind ourselves that if our services now go unrewarded and sins now go unpunished, yet there is a day coming when God will fully render to every man according to his works. We have to remember, it tells us very clearly, the word says, "Be not deceived; God is not muck; for whatsoever a man sows, that shall he also reap." So days are coming. Don't worry about those friends or those family members around you that you know are not doing what they should be doing. You can pray for them. You can try to encourage them to make right choices. But know that the day will come that every man should stand before God for himself, and God will do the judging. Let us look at verse 16. "If now thou hast understanding, hear this: hearken to the voice of my words; shall even he that hate it write government, and wilt thou condemn him that is most just? Is it fit..." We're in Job 34th chapter, verse 18. "Is it fit, excuse me, to say that a king, thou art wicked; and to princes, ye are ungodly? How much less to him that excepteth not the persons of princes, nor regarded the rich more than the poor; for they all are the work of his hands?" Regardless as to our positions, regardless to our titles, regardless to the jobs that we hold, beloved, we are all the creations of God. We are made according to Genesis in His lightness, in His image. So we are all the creations of God. And it says to us here, as we are reading, "Is it fit to say to a king, 'Thou art wicked,' or to the princes, 'Ye are ungodly? How much less to him that excepteth not the persons of princes, nor regarded the rich more than the poor; for they all are the work of his hands? In a moment shall they die, and the people shall be troubled at night or at midnight, and pass away; and the mighty shall be taken away without hand; for his eyes are upon the ways of man, and he seeth all his doing. There is no darkness nor shadow of death where the workers of iniquity may hide themselves.'" In other words, we're saying that we serve a God that is all-seeing. We call Him Elroy. Elroy is an all-seeing God. There is no place we can go that we can hide. There is no valley too deep, no mountain too high that God cannot see what we are doing. And it says to us, "For his eyes are upon the ways of man, and he seeth all his doing. There is no darkness nor shadow of death where the workers of iniquity may hide themselves; for he will not lay upon man more than right, that he should enter into judgment with God; he shall break in pieces mighty men without number and set others in their stead." He has the ability, beloved. If we don't do what we need to do for God, He can sit us down or shut us down and allow someone else to take our place. Therefore, it says, "He knoweth their works; and he overturneth them in the night, so that they are destroyed; he striketh them as wicked men in the open sight of others; because they turned back from him and would not consider any of his ways; so that they caused the cry of the poor to come unto him, and he heareth the cry of the afflicted. When he giveth quietness, who then can make trouble? And when he hideth his faith, who then can behold him, whether it be done against a nation or against a man only?" Beloved, over and over and over again, I reiterate, God sees, God hears, God knows. In the book of Second Kings, there's a scripture that says, "For he sees your tears; he hears our prayers." This is up to God when he answers. We have to stop thinking that because we pray on Monday, God's gonna answer on Tuesday. Our time is not His time, but He does see. He does hear, and He will, praise God, answer. Verse 29 says, "When he giveth quietness, who then can make trouble? And when he hideth his faith..." I repeat this again, "who then can behold him, whether it be done against a nation or against a man only? That the hypocrite reign not, lest the people be ensnared." This word is telling us right here that Elihu appeals directly to Job himself. He says, you know, "Could he suppose that God was like those earthly princes who hate right, who are unlit to rule and fool the scrudges of mankind? It is daring presumption to condemn God's proceeding." We have to trust God and allow Him to do what He does best. It says, "That all is well that God does, and will be found so." So, but our job would be then is to simply trust Him and take Him at His word. Verses 31 to 37 says, "Surely it is meat to be said unto God: 'I have borne chastisement; I will not offend anymore; that which I see not, teach me; if I have done iniquity, I will do no more.' Should it be according to thy mind? He will recompense it, whether thou refuse or whether thou choose or not. I therefore speak what thou knowest. Let men of understanding tell me; and let a wise man hearken unto me." Job had spoken without knowledge, and his words were without wisdom. And so, we are looking, as he's saying in verse 37, that Job was speaking, but he was speaking without certain knowledge and that his words really at some point in time were not as wise as they needed to be. Now, most of us know we're in pain. We're going through a deep loss. We're going through some things that will blow literally our minds. That even though we're... He's not cursing God. Even though he didn't give up on God, he's still feeling that God is not with him. So Elihu has to show God, has to show Job that yes, God is yet with him. And so, it says, verse 36, "My desire is that Job may be tried unto the end because of his answers for wicked men; for he added rebellion unto his sin; he clappeth his hand among us and multiplied his words against God." There was a time, as I said, that he didn't curse God, but he was not giving God his still rightful due. And we have all been guilty, I'm sure, of that at some point in time or another. So this verse is 31 to 37. When we reproach for what is a myth, we must direct to what is good. Job's friends would have had him own himself a wicked man. But Elihu directs Job to humble himself before God for his sins and accept the punishment. The sin now is that he's kind of doubting God. And as I stated, we've all been there. Elihu is... He is now reasoning with Job concerning his discontent under affliction. Amen. And we've all been there. "Lord, why me? God, why am I going through this? Am I the only one?" We need to always know, we are not the only one. And that God does know how much we can bear. But beloved, He gives us certain trials to make us totally depend and become reliable on Him. He does give us more than we can bear so that we can call on Him and trust in Him like we need to. As we go to chapter 35 now, we're on chapter 35 in Job. And chapter 35 reads, "Elihu spake moreover and said, 'Thinkest thou this to be right, that thou said it, 'My righteousness is more than God? For thou said it; what advantage will it be unto thee? And what profit shall I have if I be cleansed from my sin? I will answer thee and thy companions with thee; look into the heavens and see, and behold the clouds which are higher than thou; if thou sinnes, what dost thou against him? Or if thy transgression be multiplied, what dost thou unto him? If thou be righteous, what givest thou him? Or what receiveth he of thine hand? Thy wickedness may hurt a man as thou art; and thy righteousness may profit the son of man.'" We're going to learn right here that Elihu is now speaking to Job and to those that are sitting in attendance. And he's speaking to them concerning man's conduct. He's talking to them, and he's saying that he reproves Job for justifying himself more than God. Because remember, for a little bit there, Job puts himself up kind of high, you know? "I've done this, I've done that." And we have to be careful, beloved, that we don't get our trouble. Amen? We have to be careful that we don't get our trouble. And so, we have to make sure that God is above us in everything, that He is above us. So as we look now at verses nine through 13, we're in Job 35th chapter, verses nine through 13. "By reason of the multitude of oppressions they make the oppressed to cry; they cry out by reason of the arm of the mighty; but none said, 'Where is God, my Maker, who giveth songs in the night, who teaches us more than the beasts of the earth, and makes us wiser than the fowls of heaven?'" I really enjoyed when I listened to them talking about that God, our Maker, giving songs in the night. Have you ever awakened in the night? Could be one, two, three, four o'clock, and the Lord puts a song in your spirit? And let me tell you, it's usually when you're feeling the most depressed, it's when you're feeling differently, that God will put either a word, His word, His word, in your heart, or He will put a song. So when I read that, I began to smile because I'm like, yes, God is our Maker, who will give us songs in the middle of the night. He will give us His word in the middle of the night to encourage us, to give us more determination to run on a little while longer. Amen. Who teaches us more than the beasts of the earth? Because remember in Genesis again, He said that man would have dominion over the animals. Not that the animals have dominion over us. So we... He's given us a higher level of thinking than the animals. And He's taught us things to do. That's why we can tell an elephant, can train him to pick up his foot or to let us lie in his tusk, and he raises us up. We can tell or teach dolphins how to sing. It's us that can... We who can teach the seals tricks and to tell a Doberman Pinscher to sit or chill, to lie, or to attack. He has given us that dominion over them. So it tells us, "There they cry, but none giveth answer because of the pride of evil men." It lets us know. And verse 13, "Surely God will not hear vanity; neither will the Almighty regard it." Job complains, it's letting us know that God did not regard the cries of the oppressed against their oppressors. And so, He's letting us know that He knew how to reconcile the justice of God and His government. Elihu solves the difficulty. Men do not notice the mercies they enjoy in and under their afflictions, nor are they thankful for them. Sometimes, we just have to thank God for everything, thank Him when we're doing well, thank Him when we're not doing well, thank Him when we're sick, thank Him when we're well, thank Him when we have money in our pocket, thank Him when we don't have a dime in our pocket. Thank Him in everything we ought to give thanks unto the God of our salvation. And here now in Job 35, 14 to 26, it simply says, "Although thou sayest, 'Thou shalt not see him,' yet judgment is before him; therefore trust thou in him; but now, because it is not so, he hath visited in his anger; yet he knoweth it not, it great extremity. Therefore doth Job open his mouth in vain; he multiplied words without knowledge." It's letting us know that sometimes those who are wise cannot be wise 24/7. We can open our mouth, we can have knowledge, but not be wise in the way that we need to be wise. So when Job looked up to God, he had no reason to speak despairingly. He knew that God had blessed him, and so he should have not spoken despairingly. Elihu directs, directed by God, he was directed and sent by God to humble Job. Amen. Isn't it a blessing that sometimes when we think more highly of ourselves than we ought, God will send someone? And it doesn't have to be someone you know, doesn't have to be your best friend, doesn't have to be a relative. God will send someone to your life to let you check yourself. You gotta check yourself sometimes and make sure that you are not thinking of yourself more highly than you ought. Amen. And this morning, so Elihu, I want you to write down two things this morning. Elihu is directed by God to have Job humble himself, humble himself. And because Job had A, opened his mouth in vain, he had opened his mouth in vain, and B, he had multiplied words without knowledge. Multiplied words without knowledge. I want you to remember today and say to someone at some point today that experience is a great thing. Sometimes, we can understand words. We might have knowledge, and sometimes, we don't have wisdom and understanding because we have not experienced certain things. Now, in chapter 36, what I'm going to do this morning for brevity and clarity, I'm going to read out of the NIV this morning, verse 36. It says, "Elihu continues, 'Bear with me a little longer, and I will show you that there is more to be said in God's behalf. I get my knowledge from afar; I will ascribe justice to my Maker; be assured that my words are not false; one who has perfect knowledge is with you.'" God is mighty. Hallelujah. Listen to these words that Elihu is telling to Job and reminding him. God is mighty. You know, that's a highlighter. "But despises no one." Even though He's mighty, He doesn't have a threat or awe against anyone. He is mighty and firm in His purpose. He does not keep the wicked alive, but gives the afflicted their rights. He does not take his eyes off of righteousness. All of this is highlighted. "He enthrones them with kings and exalts them forever; but if people..." But if people are bound in chains, held fast by cords of affliction, he tells them what they have done, that they have sinned arrogantly. He makes them listen to correction and commands them to repent of their evil. If they obey and serve him, they will spend the rest of their days in prosperity. But listen to this, and their years in contentment. And their years in contentment. He's letting them know that. But he's saying to them, but if they do not listen, they will perish by the sword. Other words, I know people will, you know, do some things. They can be blessed regardless as to what's going on. They can, they can still be blessed, Job. Don't give up on God. God is almighty, God is powerful. Don't give up on him because God has not given up on you. And it says in verse thirteen, the godless in heart harbor resentment. And when he fetters them, they do not cry for help. They die in their youth, among male prostitutes of the shrines. But those who suffer, he delivers in their suffering. He speaks to them in their affliction. He is wooing you from the jaws of distress to a spacious place free from restriction and the comfort of your table laden with choice food. But now you are laden with the judgment due of wickedness. He's letting us know Elihu here shows that God acts as a righteous governor to all of us. And he knows that the affliction will make people willing to learn, but afflictions will also make us not willing to do again what we've already done. So if we're looking here at verse now, we're gonna go to verse nineteen. Would your wealth or even all your mighty efforts sustain you? So you would not be in distress? Do not long for the night to drag people away from their homes. Beware of turning to evil, which you seem to prefer to affliction. God is exalted in his power, who is a teacher like him? Who is? No one is a better teacher than God. Amen. So we are grateful for that. Who has prescribed his ways for him? Or said to him, you have wronged, done wrong? Remember to extol his work, which people have praised in psalm. All humanity has seen it. Mortals gaze on from afar. How great is God beyond our understanding? Highlight, I'll like, highlight. The number of his years is past finding out. He draws up the drops of water, excuse me, which distill as rain to the streams. The clouds pour down their moisture, and abundant showers fall on mankind. Who can understand how he spreads out the clouds? How he thunders from his pavilion? And it says, uh, he's going on and he's letting, uh, us know that all of these great things, that it's, it's God. God is doing all of this. He's going on to say that we never to, to dare to think favorably of sin, nor to really indulge in it, nor our lives ourselves to be in it. But we must know that there is a God, a God who is in control of everything and a God who does not make mistakes. So he's saying to us today, as we conclude this beautiful chapter of Job, chapter thirty-six, it says, see how he scatters his lightning about him. Look at the power of God. He controls the clouds, the thunder, the lightning. Look at that. This is the, the way he governs the nation and provides food in abundance. He fills his hands with lightning and commands it to strike its mark. Therefore, it just doesn't randomly happen. God knows what he's doing. His thunder announces the coming storm. Even the cattle make known its approach. And so when we are hearing this and we're seeing this, it says to us in these verses, that Elihu is endeavoring to fill Job with high thoughts of God. Elihu was sent there by God to just remind Job, I am the Lord God Almighty. I am he, I am the God of your fathers. I am the God which giveth thee strength and encouragement. All you need to do is trust and believe. So he's letting us know that the light and the favor of God, the light of this continent, the most blessed light of all, even that light has many a cloud. But the clouds of our sins cause the Lord to his face and hinder the light of the loving kindness from sharing in our souls. So Job, just as, as some of the young people used to say, just chill out. It's gonna be alright. Keep trusting, keep believing. I am a God which loves thee. I, I, I am with you. I was with you when you were prosperous, and now I'm with you when you are down to your last dime. I am still your God. Today, beloved, as you go to your various, uh, places or stay home as best you can because it's healthier to stay home, as you are doing those things, just remember that God is still with you. With all that's going on, all the injustices that are going on. God sees, God hears, God knows, and in God's time, God will work it out. God bless you. May his peace be upon you. Continue to read thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine. And, uh, as you are reading that, we're almost finished, finishing up the book of Job. We only have, I think, six more, uh, chapters to go, and we would have completed Job. But please remember, there is power. There is power in the God that we serve, and he will never, ever leave us nor forsake us. Be blessed. I'll look for you Sunday morning, it's Father's Day. Amen? So between now and then, try to call your father, try to text him. Visitations are not permissible at this point, but give him a call. Whether your father, uh, did what was right or not, it is still your father. And God says to honor your father and your mother, that your days may be long in the land which the Lord thy God giveth thee. God bless you. May his peace be upon you.